A joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. And we have a roll call for the city council.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
Roll call for our housing authority.
Yes, for the housing authority, please, roll call.
Authority members, Friedman.
Here.
Manukian. Mincy.
Here.
Karasian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Najarian.
Here.
May we have your report?
Senator, the May 1st, 2012 joint public meeting of the city council and the Glendale Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, April 26, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. There are a few items before you this joint meeting today. The first one is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding fiscal year 2012-2013 proposed annual action plan for community development block grant, CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Act home programs. At 1 is council resolution adopting a negative declaration for fiscal year 2012-13 CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan. At B is council motion approving fiscal year 2012-13 CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan and authorizing submission of the plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We have for you a report that refers back to our five-year consolidated plan in some file with HUD. Each year, we have to do an action plan that animates this particular long-range strategy. And this year, the added element of planning for all of the expenditure of these funds comes with the realization that we are being, having our allocation reduced in the area of social services funding by about 35 percent. That has precipitated a rather exhaustive and lengthy discussion with our commission and with staff in terms of how best to spread that hit equitably over the different service providers. And our director, Jess Duran, will be giving you the staff presentation. Jess.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, Chairman Najarian, members of the housing authority. You all are somewhat familiar with the CDBG, the annual CDBG program planning process now. So in view of that, as you may recall, we were last before you regarding community development block grant or CDBG business last November, at which time the city council reviewed and approved the fiscal year 1213 CDBG community needs assessment that had been completed. You approved program priorities that were identified as a result of that community needs assessment, and you approved a proposed funding allocation plan by funding category based on our best estimates of the funding that we were scheduled to receive from HUD. And then lastly, you authorized the issuance of a request for funding proposal to the community and to city departments based on the funding allocation plan that you approved. So the RFP was issued, and based on the response to the RFP, we did receive 26 funding proposals, which were three less than last year. Of the 26 proposals, this included 22 for social services and four for capital improvements to nonprofit-owned community centers. Exhibit two attached to your report is a list of all the proposals that were received, the funding recommendation for each proposal, and the difference between the current funding and the funding that is being recommended for fiscal year 1213. So Exhibit two is really the crux of what we need to deal with today in terms of approving an annual plan and the funding recommendations. You all remember that HUD does require that the city involve Glendale residents or citizens in the decision-making process of developing the annual CDBG funding plan. Therefore, the city council, as most communities across the country, appoints a CDBG advisory committee who is responsible for providing input into the annual planning process, for reviewing any changes that occur with projects throughout the year, and most importantly, evaluating funding proposals and making funding recommendations to the city council. As Mr. Ochoa alluded to, we have one big issue that has beset the CDBG program this year. That is a 35 percent reduction in fiscal year 1213 funding, which is significant. We understand the reason for this reduction is that this is the first year that HUD is applying the 2010 census data, which showed a drop in population, low-income persons, and persons below the poverty level in Glendale. In addition, HUD has revised its method of calculating formula entitlements, which also impacted us. They are now using an additional data source called the American Community Survey, and combined with the census, it's a new formula that HUD is using. And evidently, this survey further shows a less need in Glendale, although staff has yet to see that data to do our own comparison and analysis of that new data source. Nonetheless, it would appear that this 35 percent reduction represents the new baseline for Glendale's funding, or as we've alluded to earlier today, the new normal for Glendale. We were notified of this reduction in the middle of the RFP process, so notwithstanding the reduction, we went ahead and followed the same proposal evaluation process that we have been following for the past several years. As it relates to social service programs, which of course is the most competitive area of our funding, this 35 percent reduction translates to a $149,100 decrease from the current year funding to $446,000. Quite frankly, in discussing the reductions with the CDBG advisory committee at our meetings, we did talk about that it wasn't necessarily a goal or even prudent to try to fund all of the organizations that submitted proposals. It wouldn't always be in the best interest of trying to spread the money around so that everybody gets a little bit, because it would be harder for them to meet some of their service-level goals and harder to meet the requirements of the CDBG program. I would also like to point out that as part of the reduction, we do have to cut staff position in our management and oversight staff. That's an administrative analyst position, which we can no longer afford. It's a position that is responsible for providing technical assistance to the organizations, collecting backup invoicing, backup low-income documentation, and processing those monthly invoices with our finance department, collecting and correcting quarterly performance reports that are required. This position was responsible for program monitoring of the agencies to ensure compliance with city and HUD requirements, and for construction projects, ensuring that those projects follow the federal rules and regulations for open competitive bidding, for advertising, for EEO compliance, and for providing wage rates. So we are losing a position, and so it's even in staff's interest to potentially fund fewer projects than what we're accustomed to in order to ensure that we can do our job in contract administration. The committee does spend countless hours studying the funding proposals, evaluating performance reports, financial analysis reports, the cost-effectiveness of the programs, numbers served, whether programs that meet the highest priority needs, and to what extent programs coordinate with other organizations, among other things. So they work very hard. They interview each organization, the committee deliberates, and then they make their funding recommendations. This year, as difficult as it was with the limited funding, the committees, all of the committees' funding recommendations were by a unanimous vote. Unfortunately and regrettably, I think it's safe to say that most organizations are not happy with their funding recommendation, and in fact, there were five programs that are currently funded that were not recommended for continued funding. I know you have a significant number of speaker cards, so we can end our presentation here. We do have a PowerPoint if you're interested in more background information, but as indicated earlier, you're all pretty familiar with the program development process. We're also prepared with a spreadsheet that we could project on the screen, so if you want to make revisions to the funding recommendations, we can do that and automatically calculate to see that we're balanced. But again, the gist of what we need to accomplish today is approval of the funding recommendations as depicted on your Exhibit Two of the report, which becomes the annual plan that we submit to HUD. We do have members of the CDBG advisory committee here, including the Chair, Romella Markarian, who would like to speak to the council very briefly, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Romella Markarian. I'm the Chair of the CDBG Commission. These past two years have been extremely difficult for our committee. We have been dealing with cuts, 15 percent in the year of '11, '12, and 35 percent for fiscal year 1213, so we were looking at a 50 percent cut in the past two years. The number of applicants, however, remained the same. Just to give you an example, in public social services, we had requests for funding of $1 million, and we only had $297,000 available to us. So it was extremely difficult. It breaks my heart that we had to eliminate some of the programs, but the limited funding, really, we had no choice. We evaluated every application thoroughly. I highlighted, and believe me, we went through every page, and we made sure that we are not missing anything. We had to focus on the safety net programs, seniors and youth at risk, and those programs that really are recommended by staff and by HUD to, those are safety net and important programs for the city. So we were very careful, and we tried to be very fair, and I understand that unfortunately we had some organizations that were not funded. I think Mr. Duran explained everything thoroughly, and our recommendations was basically unanimously and also supported by staff. So I'm here for all the comments that public has to say.
Questions for Mr. Markarian. Mr. Manukian.
Yes, considering that we had, as a city, we had a 35 percent decrease in our funding, why didn't you just go across the board and decrease everyone's funding by 35 percent from last year? Not that that would add up.
Well, each organization is different. I don't think just overall cut by 35 percent is fair, because there's some organizations that are really, with the amount they're requesting, they will be serving so many that just giving 35 percent cut to them is just not fair, versus there were some organizations that most of their funding would go towards, you know, staff. We wanted to really examine each application and be very fair, not just give a 35 overall cut. And again, we talked about that, and again, the decision was made unanimously that let's examine every application, and based on that, say, 35 or 25 or even none. I mean, there were few organizations that were actually asking for a small amount, but they were going to reach out to youth at risk during the summer, certain programs that are really going to benefit youth programs, and we felt like, okay, this is, if we cut them by 35 percent, it's really going to defeat the purpose. I mean, they're not going to be able to meet their goals. So some of the programs, you know, we actually didn't cut as much if they were asking for a smaller funding. But we, I think, our committee tried to do the best, given the circumstances of such a large cut.
Increase some of the funding, basically, actually. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, overall, I think most of the organizations received cuts.
Right.
And there were a few that were eliminated. But we also had to look how many organizations are reaching out to youth, and if you had too many, maybe we should eliminate one. I mean, we tried to be very fair across the board and see which organizations and how many and what area, what zip codes. I mean, we were very thorough, and we tried to, you know, kind of be fair amongst.
You continue saying youth. What about, was that your focus?
When I say my, I mean the committee.
Right.
Yeah.
And I refer to it as the committee.
Yes.
Was the focus of the committee youth services or?
It wasn't just youth services. It was senior programs, it was youth services, it was the homeless, yeah, all the safety net programs, and those major programs stayed. You know, we didn't eliminate any of those programs.
Other questions?
I have a question. So there was a public hearing held on March 15 at the Pacific Community Center. Did any members of the CDBG Commission attend that?
I wasn't able to attend.
You know if anyone else did?
I'm not sure. I don't think so.
You know, wouldn't that be an important thing for members of our commission to attend the public hearing?
Yes, you're absolutely right.
That's sort of, regardless of how the money is distributed, I'm
I agree.
Like, whoa, something just doesn't seem right, because it's not up to Laura Stotler to determine how it's allocated, or Mr. Carrillo. It's the commission that does it.
Yes, yes, I agree, and I think that's why most of us here today.
Can someone from staff address that? Were they, I mean, was the commission invited? Did you feel, how can you go forward with a public hearing without the body present?
Yes.
Chairman Najarian, Mayor Quintero, members of the housing authority city council. The purpose for this public hearing per the HUD guidelines is solely to receive comments on the list of recommendations that are published in a newspaper preceding the public hearing. It is not to reevaluate proposals or to engage in a dialogue. It is simply to receive comments on the list of recommendations in the newspaper. There's also a public hearing at the beginning of the plan development process and per HUD. That's a public hearing where you have more of a dialogue and engagement on what the community priorities are and the types of programs that your committee should be funding. It is typical to have a committee member or two present at this public hearing, but it's, per HUD, it's not essential. We don't change any of the recommendations as a result of the comments that we receive. We simply attach the comments to your staff report, and ultimately, it's up to the city council how much weight they want to put on any of the comments or what revisions they want to make to the funding recommendations.
The minutes, and the minutes were forwarded to all committee members.
Other comments? A hearing, none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. I have 11 cards, start with Sona Zenzalian, followed by Surin Zakarian.
Good afternoon, Honorable Glendale City Mayor and council members. My name is Sona Zenzalian from Armenian Relief Society. Armenian Relief Society Social Services has been administering a variety of social services for decades in the city of Glendale. Our services address tremendous needs by a unique and underserved population of the city. We continue striving for the betterment of the Glendale community by helping needy individuals and family with languages barriers, become self-sufficient and productive members of the society. We were very disheartened to see the recommendation of advisory committee, which reflects a reduction of our grant funding for the 2012-2013, about 35 percent. And we did the calculation, there was one or two more who got the 35 percent. And we run two programs with one staff. With an ever-growing need for our services demonstrated by the community, a reduction of this sort will be detrimental, because we will have to cut back our services, including our senior life skills, which is safety net program, and English as a second language classes, which are very effective. We will have no choice but to reduce our staff persons' working hours, thereby causing for delays of completion of all the forms, and all the clients that you sent for the housing, Section 8, citizenship, I name it, you guys, you know our programs. Previous funding received from the city of Glendale has proven very effective and allowing us to serve more than 1,000, and we look for the other programs. We serve more than 1,000 with unlimited services, 1,000 individuals, not 20 or 60. We have seen positive outcomes as a result of our services we offer. By offering our guidance, we have seen growing confidence in our clients, those struggling of limited English speaking ability, difficulty with acculturation and supportive services, and are alleviated as a result of our assistance. We respectfully would like our appeal to be noted regarding the advisory committee's recommendation, and strongly encourage you to reconsider our proposal, increasing our funding for area services, so we can continue our service to the city Glendale resident, your constituents. I am fortunate today to have some of our clients, these are only one classroom for the seniors, not the clients that we have, with us today to voice their concern about the negative outcomes we're going to anticipate. On their behalf, Mr. Surin Zakarian will speak, because I don't want to take your time, and you know what we're doing, the result is here. I can invite, you can invite Mr. Surin Zakarian to speak.
He'll be speaking next. Surin Zakarian, followed by Paula Devine.
Yes, Surin will speak on behalf.
Okay, you can sit.
Unavailable members of the Glendale City Council. My name is Surin Zakarian, and I am 69 years old. I came to America five years ago from Iran as a refugee. I lived in Glendale for five years. When I came to America, I did not know any English word, and life was very hard. I was very happy to go to American Armenian Relief Society for any help and also to learn English. I feel good and happy to go to English classes two days a week now. I can read signs, go shopping by myself, read my medication, write my bills, talk to the bus driver or the bank teller. My life has changed a lot, and I am very happy to live in America, especially in Glendale. I thank our Armenian center, which is also known as a high tune, for all their support. We would like to ask you to fund this program in order to continue our classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zakarian. Paula Devine, followed by Natalie Camuro.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, Chair Najarian, city council, and housing authority. As Chairman of the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, I realize how difficult this decision was for the CDBG to put forth recommendations for distribution of funds, and now you are all faced with the same decision. The Camp Rosie program that the commission provides is will be in its sixth year this summer. It has evolved into a dynamic and well-respected summer program for girls. We have graduated future explorers in the Glendale Police Department, scholarship recipients, one of which I know from the American Association of College Women, and we've even had one become an ex-official on our commission. Last month, you gave a commendation to Safe Place, and you had, the recipient of that commendation used one of our Camp Rosie grads as her example of what Safe Place does. One evening, her father came home in a drunken rage. The girl had been to Camp Rosie, she knew of Safe Place, she had the number, and she made the phone call, and she got to a Safe Place. That's only one incident of Camp Rosie helping young girls in our community, but it also illustrates the coordination and the collaboration between the commission and the organizations in our community to make the best use of CDBG money. So I hope that you will become, that you will deem us worthy of consideration and continuing funding, so we can keep Camp Rosie alive. Our staff is here to answer any questions if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Camuro, followed by Tim Peters.
Good afternoon. I'm Natalie Camuro with Ascencia. I'm also the Chair of the Glendale Homeless Coalition, and on behalf of the coalition, we want to thank the committee for its hard work and its recommendation in support of homeless programs. On behalf of Ascencia, I do want to point out that we have a proposal in there for our outreach team. The street outreach team has been a recipient of CDBG funding for years, and it's been an important part of our continuum of care system. We had a wonderful success recently, that was three years in the making. We had an alcoholic veteran who was living in Chess Park, and we couldn't get him to come in for services for many, many years. Last winter, he finally went into the VA, and now I can say that he is actually sober. He looks fantastic, and we're working to move him to permanent housing. This program is really essential to engaging the people that live on the streets of Glendale. You're going to be hearing in the next few weeks from the staff the latest update on the numbers, but I can tell you, it's still hovering around 300 homeless people on any given night in Glendale. So we do need to continue the investment in homeless programs, albeit it's going to be diminished because of these cuts. So I thank you for this. I do have to leave early, so I'm sorry, I won't be here later.
Okay, thank you. Tim Peters, followed by Sandy Doughty and Salpe Kerkossharion.
Hi, my name is Tim Peters. I'm the Executive Director of the Door of Hope and council, mayor, and staff. I want to thank you for your support of all the services in Glendale and all that you do. I know that it's a really difficult time in the economy, and I'm before you just in support of the recommendations that the staff and the CDBG committee have given. I know that they've given much deliberation and thorough examination of every application and have vented it thoroughly. It was an extremely difficult decision, and I know that there's less funding available, and even the Door of Hope, we were cut significantly. But yet, in these difficult times, I know that we need to work together more now than ever, and there's a lot more pressure for measurable outcomes and achieving efficiency and effectiveness in measurable goals and objectives. And together, the, on behalf of the Homeless and Housing Coalition, of which I'm the Vice Chair, I would like to just recommend that you accept the recommendations by the staff and that, as presented, and as they have done exhaustive deliberation and already vented everything. If any changes were to be made, I think it would be a difficult, difficult task that would have to start the process all over, and it would actually undermine a lot of the really hard work and the effort that so much has gone into this difficult decision that has already been presented. And so I just want to just recommend the funding as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy and Salpe, followed by Malene Tomassien.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of city council and city staff. My name is Sandy Doughty. I'm the Executive Director at G A R Services, and this is Salpe Kerkossharian. She is our multicultural counselor. G A R Services serves adults with developmental disabilities, and the funding that we requested was to provide some money to our multicultural program, and it's actually to provide part of the salary of our multicultural instructor. 100 percent of her salary is paid for with grant money, and I am not here to ask for more money. I'm not out here to ask you to increase the amount that was recommended. I'm happy to let you know that we have received two additional grants to make up the difference, and so about one-third of the salary is coming from CDBG. So we're not here to ask for more money, we're here to just ask you to please support the recommended amount. I just want to let you know a little bit about G A R Services. We also, in our proposal, asked for money for a computer system, and we received a donation, so we were able to purchase that. So we have really done our work, and we know it's tough times right now, but we have gone to other resources to make up the difference. So we know that the CDBG commissioners have worked very hard with the budget cuts. G A R Services is funded by the state, and so we've received many cuts, and so we are very aggressive in our grant-writing efforts. Salpe is going to talk a little bit about the program, but in case some of you don't know, I know many of you have been to G A R and are familiar with our program, so I'm going to let Salpe just give you a little more information.
Good afternoon. As you all know, G A R Services is a work activity program, it's a work training program for adults who have developmental disabilities, and we serve individuals in the Glendale, Burbank, Foothill regions, as well as a few from Hollywood. But again, for the purposes of the grant and the multicultural program that we have, we serve mostly Glendale residents. Over 50 percent of the individuals in our program are considered multicultural, meaning they do not speak English as a primary language. About 44 percent of our About 44% of our total clients do not speak English at all. They are either of Armenian or Middle Eastern descent, as you can see, which makes the class so incredibly vital to assist them in, you know, overcoming language barriers, seeking out employment, developing skills to become more productive and independent individuals within the community. Just some of the success stories that I want to share with you, because I know we don't have much time. Due to the, the class which has been over 15 years
Yes.
in, in serving our population, we now have clients that attend Glendale Community College independently, we now have individuals working competitively in the, in the community, earning minimum wage or above. We also have individuals that now act as translators for their own family members, specifically aging parents and siblings, because they know the language better than their family members do. So it's really become a very successful program, and we hope to see it continue with your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Melene Tomassien, followed by Laura Atoyan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero and Councilmembers and Staff. My name is Melene Tomassien, and I recently joined ARC Family Center in Glendale and to be part of their fundraising committee. And on behalf of Dr. Khuda Verdyan, Melina Sardar, and the team, we are very concerned that this program funding will be cut. And recently, I, I was brought to the attention, and I thought, why would something like this that's benefiting the community be put away and not brought some attention? So, you know, the Youth Freedom and Awareness Program is very important for the, for the youth who is going to need help with language barriers and bullying and mentoring and coaching. So they're not asking for the amount that they've been given, but if they can get at least 35% less than that, it would be really appreciated. And they've been, we've served over 200 teens in the last couple of years, and I personally, if I had something like this, I would feel like I would have been a lot more successful in my life. I recently completed their CFA program, and I feel like it's removed a lot of obstacles in my life, and I've dealt with things, and I feel this is very important for the community. If you can take one kid off the street from drugs or gangs, and you have a center for them to communicate their problems because they can't with their parents, or even in school, sometimes they feel insecure about, you know, their language or just their abilities, you know, this is very important for them to have. We're here to state that the need is great, and should there be funding available, we'd really appreciate it. And currently, I will be the hostess for our fundraising event at Michael's Bar and Grill. We are not, you know, stopping from doing fundraisers, and we are seeking out more grants and sponsors, and I'm really excited because this is going to be the first singing contest, and it won't be the last. We're continuing to find more venues to fundraise and bring more awareness to this program, and I think it's very important for you all to get some attention. And, you know, someone told me that, you know, lots of money goes to other, other projects that's not directly helping the community, and I feel that, you know, in a Whitney Houston song, "Children are our future," lead them way and let them, you know, it's like, it's kind of like the healing the world feeling, you have to start with the teens who really need help. So I came today, wanted to be more of an activist on their program, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Laura Atoyan, followed by Medea Kalagonomos.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, Councilmembers. Could I please respectfully ask that you allow Ms. Jill Firstman to go before me, because she's in a hurry, she has a meeting to attend to. She's also part of our group.
To have who come?
Jill Firstman.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right, so we have Jill Firstman, and then they'll, she'll be followed by the previous speaker, by Laura. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers and City Employees. Thank you so much for giving me a moment to speak about something that I'm very passionate about. It is the CASP's Counseling Program. When the representative from CDGB began, she said that the focus is on the youth. The focus would be on the youth. Our program's been cut completely to zero, and it's disheartening, of course, and I know that this is a difficult time for all of us with these budget cuts. But I just want to speak to early intervention. This is an elementary program, and I have some experience on two different levels of this program. I was a classroom teacher who was able to refer students that, at a young age, I saw were at risk for deviant behaviors. I am now in a position Teacher Specialist, and I do the discipline at my school, and I'm also able to see and use this program for a huge benefit of being able to have a counseling program at our school where, when students are beginning to show signs of being at risk, that there is something that we can turn to right away. CASP has been at my school for 10 years, Columbus Elementary, and what I want to say to you, that it's not really about the six-year-old and the eight-year-old and the 11-year-old that's being involved in this early intervention counseling program. It's about the 16-year-old, the 21-year-old, and the 25-year-old. This early intervention makes a difference. Districts, school districts all over the nations have had to cut, all over the nation have had to cut counseling programs. Now the city and the community is cutting our fundings. Who's going to take care of the children? If the funding continues to be cut, I feel that there's going to be a huge impact in the future of the city of Glendale. Who's going to help them learn problem-solving skills and refusal skills for success in middle school and high school? Who's going to help them become the responsible contributing tax-paying citizens of this Early intervention at the elementary level is key for our children. Helping a student now costs $8.86 an hour, a bargain compared to the cost of juvenile hall and prison. We need to give them the skills so that they do not end up as wards of the state, instead so they can become contributing tax-paying citizens. Of course, I'm an educator, so I look to data. The first piece of data that I evaluated was suspensions all over the state.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
Okay. People tend to think that elementary school is not where the problem begins, but 26% of all suspensions in the state were in elementary schools. Secondly, I looked back at students previously served by the CASP program who are now in middle school and high school. I'm happy to say that the students that I looked into, all of those students are in regular education high school programs, not in a daily continuation school where the at-risk students would tend to end up. So because of this inner, early intervention...
That's it. I've given you more than enough time. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay.
And if you have anything written, you can submit it to the...
Okay.
...Dirk. Medea Kalagonomos, no, I'm sorry, Laura Atoyan is next.
Thank you very much for letting Ms. Firstman go first. We are obviously shocked by the zero funding we received from the CDBG. We want to thank the CDBG for funding us over the past seven years, partially funding us, that is. This program is important not just to us, but to all the elementary students who are referred to it. And just so you know, just so the community knows, even though our name is Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools, we do serve every child who is referred to the program regardless of their ethnicity. And in fact, the majority of the people we serve are not Armenian. Over the years, we have consistently met our goals and outcomes, and I'd like to read off to you cumulative percentage of our success rate. This is just at random. In general, what the criteria is academic responsibility, self-control, and following directions. So we have 82%, 88%, 85%, this is year-end, 85%, 86%, 88%, and 90%. So we do meet our goals. Our application is very strong, always. We back up everything we say with the research at the national level, at the state level, at the county level, at the city level. So as far as the city is concerned, we also glean information from the CDE, the California Department of Education, and of course, there are statistics, statistics we always look at, and as Jill Firstman mentioned, 26% of suspensions statewide, or 26% are elementary students. However, in Glendale, they are at 20% of the overall, excuse me, overall 27,000 students in the district. So one-fifth of all suspensions and truancies are elementary school students. Unfortunately, that continues to be the same in middle school, which is really very alarming. So I just need to sort of clarify what the Intervention Prevention Clinical Counseling Program is, because we did follow the deliberations, and what came to light is that there was a total misunderstanding or miscategorization of our program while the Committee was deliberating. One member suggested that it wasn't worth funding this program because unlike tutoring programs, it served only 50 to 70 students a year at the rate of one hour a week. Of course, a tutoring program can house and serve 30 to 40 or more students a day throughout the course of a year. And then one member of the staff suggested that they categorize and look at age groups. Of course, we qualified with the age group criteria, but there was no way to categorize us. Am I done?
I'll just wrap it up, and your thought?
Well, they threw us in with the category of after-school programs. There's no way to compare us to an after-school program. They were comparing apples to a single orange, because there is no other program like this in Glendale. And obviously, the orange lost, and the losers will be the children who really need the service.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time, and I really wish you would reconsider and help us keep the program alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Medea Kalagonomos, followed by Dr. Mary Mason.
Good, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Medea Kalagonomos. I'm a retired educator and a CASP Board Member. I would like to read a letter to you that was written by Annette Zarian, who's also a retired educator and CASP, CASP's Board Number, Board Member. She could not be here, unfortunately, with us today, but she has sent a copy of the letter to each member of the City Council, and her letter goes as follows. I would like to read the letter and share it with the community. As someone who worked in the field of education for 27 years, 10 of which were at Daily Continuation High School in Glendale, I am acutely aware of the need for early intervention. Research shows that early intervention in the life of a child who may be having problems can be, can make a huge difference. Children who may be misbehaving or failing in elementary school stand very little chance of becoming successful, productive citizens. Unfortunately, failure breeds failure, and as these children reach the difficult time of adolescence, they turn to destructive behaviors such as drugs, alcohol, gangs, and violence. Many a time in my tenure at Daily High School, I wished we could have helped the student at a much younger age when habits and failures were not ingrained. Through behavior modification, CASP's Intervention Prevention Program has done just that. Students of all ethnicities have taken part in 30 sessions of age-appropriate activities to help develop self-discipline, self-control, respect for authority, which we think is extremely important, and academic responsibility. At a time when school districts are mirrored in financial difficulty, a nonprofit organization such as CASP is an essential partner. I urge you to continue funding the important work of this organization. I thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mary Mason, that's the final card.
Mayor, Councilmen, Housing Authority, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again this afternoon, speaking also on behalf of the CASP Counseling Program that we have at Mark Keppel Elementary School of where I am principal. And we see and we know that it takes a village to raise a child, and this CASP Counseling Program is a classic example, I think, of the city of Glendale working with the school district and the parents and the students to support children who we see early having emotional and behavioral needs that need to be addressed. As a former kindergarten teacher, I could see difficulties arise early, and to be able to support students in clinical group therapy when there's been maybe a death in the family, a divorce, and we can, we can see behavioral issues start early. So we have been blessed, and we thank you for your support in the past. We know that certainly the budgets are very tight, and I understand how difficult these decisions are, but we can certainly see the benefits in the young children who have been served in this group therapy during their school day, who would otherwise probably not have access to this kind of high-quality service. So thank you again for your support and your time and attention.
Thank you. That was the final card. Comments? Hey, do I have a motion?
Well, I have some questions. Okay, so there's two parts to the CDBG funding. One is the social services, the other is the capital improvements. And I do have several questions. Tell me about the Fair Housing Program. They're located downtown LA, and what is it that they do that can't be duplicated through any other agency in Glendale? If, if you know that.
Mayor Quintero, Chairman and Chair and Members of the Council and Housing Authority, we, about a month ago, the, the City Council or the Housing Authority approved our, our analysis of impediments to fair housing. An integral part of that and a HUD requirement is fair housing counseling to residents of a entitlement city like Glendale, and a provision for tenant landlord counseling. And so this organization provides those services and helps the city meet, meet that goal. There, there is no staff or aren't in the offices within the city structure that provides, that provides our service. We're dependent on this nonprofit organization, and as a nonprofit organization, that's all that they do. So it's, it's very cost-effective. They, it's a countywide program with, with the $10,000 that they receive from Glendale. They, they have a Glendale line where they take calls primarily from Glendale residents, and so it's a very cost-effective program. It's a HUD requirement that we provide for housing counseling to our residents.
Doesn't Neighborhood Legal Services provide that sort of support and advice?
My understanding is that Neighborhood Legal Services is not specialized in housing counseling. They probably could, and it would be coming upon them to also submit a proposal and, and, and compete as the city's contractor.
Okay. And on, on the fair housing, their, their budget went up about 20%, 25% from last year. So how do we, I mean, what's that all about when everyone else is getting eliminated totally and largely, how do we justify increasing their budget? Although, the dollar amount isn't a huge amount.
Correct.
Is there an explanation for that?
Yes, that's a very good point. We, we had been subsidizing the, the fair housing program with the, with the... We had been subsidizing the fair housing program with the housing division and with housing funds. Due to cuts to the home program, the Section 8 program, they can no longer help us subsidize this service. Therefore, it was important to at least be able to fund them at their current funding level. Probably for the last ten years, they've actually received fifteen thousand from the city of Glendale, seven or eight thousand with CDBG funds, and the balance with housing funds. Excuse me, but again, those housing funds are no longer eligible, or at least not as much as we used to have.
Okay, so you're trying to backfill some home?
Correct.
Home funds.
Correct.
Now, the Glendale Youth Alliance, someone explain this to me. This is a work program for youth. But when they go out and do work, they're paid. I mean, they're charged, they charge the homeowners. And I know that they're famous for their brush clearance efforts. So, is there no way that those costs can be, I assume these are some administrative costs that are being put in, can't those be absorbed in the rate of hourly service that they provide to the residents?
Yes. Chairman, this is probably possible for them, for GYI to strive to do that. And they would probably price themselves out of the market or out of being able to attain those contracts because they're able to do it very cost-effectively. And of course, it's youth providing the labor. So, what they're able to do with the CDBG funds, they use the CDBG funds to pay for the supervision. We wouldn't be able to use CDBG funds to pay for the youth wages themselves because of prevailing wage rates, of all things. So, what GYI does effectively is leverage different funding sources to meet different costs that are eligible under different sets of funding guidelines. And so, they use CDBG to pay for supervision of the program, to supervise the youth. They can go out and get their own contracts and be competitive because they have the different leveraged funding sources. And we're able to employ three to four hundred kids a year by doing it that way.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the STAR program. I know they've been before us, and the kids come up, but is this the one that the, we have an officer from GPD working overtime? I mean, they're working it, but we're paying them time and a half to do this. Is this the program that I'm identifying correctly?
Chairman, this is the program that you are identifying correctly. It's a mentorship program. One of the key features is a mentorship by the police officers. Police officers spend one evening a week having dinner with the youth in this, at-risk youth in this after-school program. And I think once a month, they mentor the youth, and they go on a field trip together. And then, the other four days of the week, they're engaged in an after-school recreation and homework tutoring program. The question I cannot answer is if they're still using overtime for the officer officer. I'm going to ask Mr. Correia if he can answer that question.
Moises Correia, Community Service and Parks. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and Housing Authority, the police officer does help assist with the program. I believe it's a flex time, so necessarily time and a half, although sometimes it probably would be depending on the hours. But my understanding, it's a flex time for the officer. We currently only have one officer. In the past, we've had two or three officers assist with the program. The rest of the program is done by staff, hourly staff.
How many, how many students are assisted by that program?
Twenty-four students.
How many?
Twenty-four.
And that's a once-a-week program?
Once a week on Tuesdays from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
If we could get those kids in a daily after-school program where they can receive tutoring, counseling, and encouragement to develop their character on a path to college, would that be a good substitute for what STAR is doing?
This is a very different kind of program. I think these are more at-risk kids who need a little bit more mentoring than the typical kid that's maybe thinking about college, although that's certainly a welcome program, but is a very much an at-risk program that has, of course, you all know STAR, a long history of working with kids who are at that age that need a lot of assistance. And the Community Service and Parks staff have been instrumental in assisting with the police officers now to get the kids onto graduation and then onto other youth programs.
Does Camp Rosie let boys in if a boy had applied?
Yes, Camp Rosie would have to permit a boy to attend.
I know I asked that before. I just wanted to make sure that.
Last year, yeah. Yes, it does.
Obviously, it hasn't changed. On the, I'm going to delve into the capital programs. The Section 108 loan repayment to Essentia, is that, it's the last year, I understand, of that payment?
Chairman, actually, the Edison Pacific is the last year. The 245, 988 is the last year. The 190, 579 is the first year of the ten-year loan payment.
Okay. Is there any way that 245 payment to Edison Pacific, I'm sorry, can be split to another year, split that into two years? Or is that a contractual?
It's contractual arrangement to pay on time twice. We pay it twice a year. We pay half and half. But it's contractual. This is our last year of that payment.
Neighborhood Legal Services, they want $62,000 for window efficiency. Is that really necessary?
Chairman, this is their.
Is that building renovated a few years ago?
Yes. The building was, again, the Adams Square Building, which houses Neighborhood Legal Services and also the Adams Square Library. It was, interior improvements were done a couple of years ago. Neighborhood Legal Services is asking funds for the exterior windows, which apparently are not actually the original windows, but they haven't been replaced in over thirty years or so. And they are causing issues with air leaks and cracks on the windows. And Neighborhood Legal Services is actually putting in some funds of their own to upgrade those windows from aluminum to steel windows so that it matches the architectural design of that building.
Now, hadn't we assisted in the purchase of this building initially?
Correct. Correct. We purchased that, I believe, in 2006, '05.
A significant sum, if I remember.
Yes.
Okay. And it's Neighborhood Legal Services, mainly attorneys up there?
Correct. Nonprofit, free legal services.
Sure.
I know that capital programs are given priority at CDBG. I saw that in the staff report. But why would the window replacement program be given priority over some of, that in particular, over some of these social programs? Is there a certain level of capital expenditures that we have to make that this sort of plugs into? Or is that more, is that discretionary?
There are different categories. Social service can only be spent on social service.
The 1585 split is mandatory.
Correct. Yes, the capital services are separate from social services. And our main criteria for the capital services, capital improvement projects, is actually their service component, not necessarily the building improvements, although that's important, but it's the services they provide, which is legal services, just as the other agency provide the services.
Right, I understand that, but the window replacement doesn't tie in directly to the services that they provide?
Well, it is tied to the administration and the, again, conservation of energy, conservation of, certainly, there is a lot of need in that building still to do some more improvements. It is a very old building. And we just touched upon the rehab of the library and some of the interior of the building. So, there is actually more improvements, which, again, that's a question of the Neighborhood Legal Services, when they'll come back for some more proposals. But generally, it is an eligible activity for CDBG funding.
The 1585 split that you said in terms of social services and capital improvements, is that a determination the council made earlier that was presented to the authorities before we applied for these grants or these grants were given?
Yes, Councilmember Menucha.
Was it a decision that was made by the council? And I'm thinking of next year, actually.
Councilmember Menucha, yes, it is actually a regulatory requirement to only spend fifteen percent on the social services, twenty percent on, I'm sorry, twenty percent on administration, and the fifteen percent, which essentially gives us eighty-five percent for capital. We can't go beyond eighty-five percent. We can't go beyond fifteen percent of social services or twenty percent of administration. So, it is a.
Is requirement, isn't it, Moises?
It's a HUD requirement.
It's not a city council policy that is being.
No.
And why are city programs competing with the community programs?
That's, yes, may I want to ask that, answer that?
As Mayor Quintero, Chairman and Chair and members of the City Council Housing Authority, you're referring to the social service funding category?
Yes.
Well, it's, well, we did last November, we presented a proposed preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category, which is Exhibit Three of your report. And so, this gave the recommended fifteen percent for social services, sixty-five percent for capital projects, and twenty percent for management and oversight. And so, this plan was approved. So, based on this plan, we went out and we issued the RFP. We also talked about the city's policy to pre-designate the city council's capital improvement priorities, which were, of course, our Section 108 loan payments to HUD, which we really don't have a choice.
But I'm talking about the social programs.
Okay. Well, at the time that you approved this plan, you also could have directed staff that you don't want to use the social service funds for any city projects, or you could have directed us to target a certain percentage of city versus community, or use it all for city, for that matter. So, you do have that flexibility. And if you want to direct us to pre-designate a certain amount for city projects and the balance for community, you can do that.
What is the total, the twenty percent, what is it total? It's for city administration, it's approximately five, $550,000, is that correct? How much is it? The administration fees?
It's 387,000.
387,000?
That's a $208,000 decrease from the current year.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Weaver, Dan?
I'm interested in making changes. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel. And the changes, I'm looking at some of the city programs because I believe that the city already provides these programs. And I would rather see during these difficult times that the city not compete as much with some of the organizations that provide similar services.
Mr. Menucha, when you start going through those programs, could you tell me what page you're on so I can look at the same thing you're looking?
On that page.
I don't know what page that is. I can't.
It says page one.
See that. Which attachment?
Summary list.
Or if someone can tell me where, I can find this.
Summary list.
Exhibit Two.
Two.
And I'm mainly looking at the senior service programs for community service and parks, and youth and family services program for community services and parks of $30,000. I would like to increase the Armenian Relief Society's allocation of 38,000 to another 10,000. Because I believe in the programs that they provide, I would like to also allocate for CASPs and ARC, to create freedom and awareness, and allocate in that manner.
So, what program are you saying to take the money away from?
Yeah. The city, the city senior service program, community services and parks, the 20,000?
The senior service, is that the program that gives food to homebound seniors?
Yes, which we already get funding for, and this is in addition to the funding that we receive.
So, does that mean the seniors go hungry? What happens in that case?
No, it doesn't.
Well, that's what I meant. Want to ask them what the service impacts are.
Mayor Quintero, Chairman and Chair and members of the City Council Housing Authority, this is primarily a senior case management. It would probably, it would probably eliminate half of the case manager. And we currently, our case managers currently serve, what's their caseworker, about seventy, 250 seniors a year receiving case management? So, it would impact that. Maybe drop it down to 200 seniors that can receive case management.
So, what exactly does that mean? I mean, what happens if those 50 people, 50 people or so no longer receive case management? What does that mean to their lives?
Well, they would not receive counseling. We do make home visits. It may result in seniors having to move out of their homes, either into assisted living or with other family members. What our senior case program is able to do, combined with the home-delivered meals, is kind of keep track of seniors, making sure that they're eating, making sure that their apartments or houses are kept up, making sure that they do have some socialization and some contact with people. And so, it would be fewer of those persons being able to receive that service and either having to rely on others or family members or move to assisted care. These are very frail elderly.
So, you're telling me that for those people who maybe don't have other, maybe don't have family members that are visiting them, that the only, is that the case? That some of them, maybe this is the only person that actually interacts with them?
Correct.
So, if we didn't have that caseworker, there just wouldn't be somebody knocking on their door anymore? They would be all alone, and they'd have to?
Correct. And I don't want to speak out of turn because I'm not that familiar with the daily operations, but it's possible that they would have to, the staff would have to have their own priority ranking and maybe prioritize those seniors over more and more functional seniors and make up the difference that way.
Where does the rest of the funding come from?
LA County. We get a three-year county grant. The city also subsidizes the program to the tune of 126,000 a year.
How much do we get from the LA County?
LA County is a $500,000 three-year grant.
So, we have three years of 500,000 plus 100 and how much from the city?
It's 500,000 divided by three, so.
Does that include food for them as well?
Yes. That includes the nutritional meals and the case management component. So, again, it's leveraging different funding sources. It's leveraging the grant we get from the county, the CDBG funds, and the general funds.
But let's be clear, $20,000 is not going to break the program.
The program will continue without the 20,000.
Well, that's what I was asking, what the impact of $20,000 would be on this program. And it's very hard for us to make these decisions without really knowing what this money means to a particular program. I mean, it's similar to what I had said earlier about the difficulty of evaluating a program without really knowing, without having performance benchmarks. And I know that the committee has gone through this in much greater detail. But, you know, we also, I mean, I think it's very fair to ask these questions. And, you know, I know where Mr. Menucha is going in terms of wanting to restore funding to these groups. And I agree, these groups are doing great work, and it's very painful and difficult to see their funding reduced. And I would like nothing better for us to be able to find $10,000 for Armenian Relief, to find the money for the other groups. I just want to be very sure that when we do that, or if we do that, we don't have the unintended consequence of having an elderly person all of a sudden have to move into assisted living. So, I'm relying on the answers that you're giving, Mr. Duran. If you're telling me that you think that $20,000 can be absorbed, and that's not going to happen, then I'd feel a lot more comfortable with doing that. I just, I really need to know, since we're making this decision now, as Mr. Menucha.
The first decision has to be made whether we want to open it up or not.
Right.
Not there yet. Let me just break in. I watched the CDBG committee hearings in real time that afternoon. I sat there the entire afternoon watching the deliberations. I think they were exhaustive. They looked at every angle, they went back and forth. I mean, they looked at every funding category and source. And for me, I'm willing to take their. their decision, because otherwise, I think we're going to get in exactly what you're describing, where in the beginning, you talked about fifty seniors, for instance, that may have to be dropped from the program. Well, that's not an insignificant amount of, of people that would be affected. Then Youth and Family Services, that's another one. So I don't know. I'm just not into reopening the whole funding mechanism when these people spent, the committee spent countless hours coming to this decision. Everybody deserves to be funded, as they mentioned in their deliberations. For me personally, knowing Dr. Kudavarian for many, many years, I'm very disappointed that ARC did not get funded. I'm also very disappointed that the PAL program, with the direct connection to high-risk youth, didn't get funded. So there are a number of programs, a CASP is the same way. There are a number of programs that are very effective that didn't get funded. But that's what the committee, you know, that was their decision. So it's hard to, at this point, to start reallocating.
This is my sixteenth year doing this. You know, and even when we had more money than before, there were still people up here asking us to reallocate and give more. There's always a need for more. Just in budget study sessions, we've done, we cut eighteen million dollars out of the city budget last year. We're going to cut over fifteen million dollars out of the budget this year. And that's aside from this. There just isn't as much money to go around. You think that is fun to sit up here, and we know we're going to cut working staff from the city. Their lives, their families depend on salaries they make here, and they're gone. You know, the, the same pain is here. We're getting less and less, and that's coming from Washington. It's not us. And I've said many, many times over the years, we have good staff, we have a good committee. And I went and quizzed them many years ago, how much work do you do? I asked to see the review sheets. I asked how many times they went in the field. I want to know how much time they actually spent on this. And that's an exorbitant amount of time they put in to come to these conclusions. You know, I sit here, and I'm supposed to read a staff report and see more than they see in what they're doing? Now, I have a committee that goes out if we're not going to accept the results, knowing how much work they do. I mean, everybody can say, well, they didn't treat me fairly, they didn't treat my organizations fairly. But to me, it's the best thing I have going for me. Believe the committee did their best job. And that pains me to say that that means that some groups won't get as much as they want, or zeroed out. I hope one of these days it turns around, where you can find other sources of money. There's so many needy organizations in this town, and every one of the organizations does a bang-up job. But these are tough times. So I'm with leaving it the way it is. Like Mr. Quintero, we've done the best we can. I'll probably get papers and stuff thrown as big as I go out the door, but that is the reality for me, for this year. And I, I hope that changes, because I sure don't like coming to make these cuts.
Yeah. Just, just for the record, it's not the first time that we are suggesting changing the rec, we've changed the recommendations before. So it's not, it's not something that is unusual. Second, I also believe that, that the CDBG committee has done a, a great job. Their, most of their allocations seem reasonable. Some of them I don't agree with. And it's just my opinion that we should look at needy organizations in the community and try to address some of their needs if we can, and without cutting from any other social organizations in the community. I believe that the city has considerable more funding sources and considerable more resources that they can devote to address the needs that are being applied for here in, in, in these applications. Therefore, I believe that the best thing to do is to continue working with the city within our means to address some of these needs from other sources as opposed to CDBG sources, and allocate some of these monies to these, the organizations that I mentioned, without really cutting anybody else or cutting any of the recommendations from the CDBG board.
Okay.
Let me just make a comment. I also, and CDBG committee does a great job, staff does a great job, but I just can't be a rubber stamp for their decisions. I was elected by the people of Glendale, and it's my duty to at least take a, a fresh look at the recommendations that they made. It's an advisory committee, that's in their name, CDBG Advisory Committee. I would like to get more money to CASPs, to ARC, to ARS. I would like to trim, if case anyone has a blue pencil out, I would like to trim two thousand from the Fair Housing Program from the Housing Rights Center. I would like to trim, I would like to trim a thousand dollars from the, the GAR ESL classes. I would like to trim two thousand from the Salvation Army After School. These are groups that either felt no pain, or were actually increased in funding from last year. I would like to trim a thousand from, my, my favorite commission is the Commission for the Status of Women, but from ten thousand, I'd like to lower them to nine thousand. I'd like to eliminate the, the STAR program, or at least half of it. If we've got a police officer earning time and a half, and we saw what the burdened cost of a...
Sixty percent.
...of a police officer is, that is not an efficient use of resources. I can guarantee you that no one in any of these other social agencies is hiring someone at ninety dollars an hour, a hundred dollars an hour, to do services, even the trained medical doctors and psychologists. I am aware of an offer by other nonprofits to help in the placement of those students in the STAR program, to the AYF camp during the summer at no charge, to the Path to College program, tutoring, counseling, career guidance at no charge. I think that's a very generous offer by those groups, and I won't name the specific group. I don't want to, to bang their drum for them, but these are offers that have been made from other nonprofits in the community to pick up slack should these programs be, be defunded. I think the windows, I think the windows at Neighborhood Legal Services is a bit extravagant, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of other places to put that in the capital funding. So that frees up how much money? Someone keeping, like twenty thousand?
Well, you and Mr. Manukian had, you and Mr. Manukian had different recommendations. So I don't know if you were asking about his or yours.
He had, he had his senior services. So I would, on top of his senior services defunding...
What, I'm sorry, I wrote down a few of, I wrote down STAR, Fair Housing, and city programs, but I didn't write down all of the...
I said...
Well, it's two thousand for Fair Housing, a thousand for GAR, two thousand for Salma, decreases from Salvation Army, and a thousand from the Rosie goes to somewhere?
Right, Rosie goes to, and the STAR program.
And the STAR program, that's sixteen thousand dollars.
That's what I have.
I...
Well, before we continue this, let me hear from the other two members, because we have to decide whether we're getting involved in this, or we're just going to...
Yes, they've been very quiet.
So we'll start with you.
Well, I, I just think it's terrible that we have to cut, but it's a reality. And everybody is cutting. And I personally feel that we ought to take what the committee recommended. That's my personal feeling.
Okay, so?
So we have very great picture of, in front of us about the funding, but everybody of us realized that. So the, the committee and the staff did very good job. But first of all, my heart goes to the CASP for elementary school children. I would like to have some cuts from the, the capital and give, and give to the CASP. And for the others, I didn't think that much. I, I mean, I...
Do you like to reopen it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we have at least three members that want to reopen it. I believe we have four members that...
Is it a council or a, or a housing authority?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the item requires council approval. So ultimately, it's, it's...
It's a council, not the housing.
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, let's take that. Does someone want to make a motion to...
I move one A and B.
One A and B says to approve as stated by the...
Well, I've already mentioned, that's what I'm interested in, even though, like other members of the City Council and the Housing Authority, I'm certainly not happy with this recommendation, organizations that I mentioned.
You're not happy, Frank, make changes.
Well, but no, because, I mean, then we're talking about cuts that I absolutely will not vote for. I'm not going to vote to cut the STAR program completely. I think that senior services that we're running, I think that's going to impact. I mean, that's basically working with seniors that are totally, that have big issues. And there are just too many things in the social service component that I'm not willing to play around it, but it still means less people. I mean, you mentioned fifty, fifty seniors that wouldn't be served, so...
Before, before we, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually not sure how I want to vote on this first motion, and I apologize for that. And the reason is because I also, like you, there are some of these programs that I'm not interested in, not interested in, what's, what's the phrase, robbing Peter to...
Hey Paul.
Hey Paul. I just, to try to play different social organizations against each other, I think is going to be very, very difficult. But when Mr. Manukian talks about a program that has a budget of five hundred thousand dollars, and is talking about twenty thousand dollars from that program, that becomes more of a question mark to me, given that, that twenty thousand dollars could fund the three programs that we, that are, that are here today. So while I'm not interested in playing around with Salvation Army and Camp Rosie and programs that I know are very effective, I'm not, I'm just not going to go there. But, but I am curious to hear more about the senior program and what twenty thousand dollars would really do in the context of a five hundred thousand dollar plus budget. I mean, I'm certainly not going to do that if it really means that fifty seniors, or even five seniors, have to move out of their homes and move into assisted living. I mean, that would, to me, be a terrible consequence. But I'm, Mr. Manukian seemed to be going down the path of implying that that's not exactly what would happen, and that there is more room within that budget. And so before I vote on this, I'd like to get a little bit more clarity about that.
Well, maybe Mr. Corrego has a little better understanding.
What do we do with the motion?
Committee members.
Is it drawn?
There was a second.
There wasn't a second, so...
But then the motion fails without a second?
Well, it's, it's kind of on hold, let's just put it that way.
Mayor Quintero, Members of City Council and Housing Authority, the twenty thousand is a specific grant for, again, the case manager. The other funds are actually special county funds, which can only be used for the meals program, the congregate meals at the ARC, and also homebound seniors, as well as paying for staffing that goes out. And again, it's sort of the Meals on Wheels program. So CDBG is flexible enough to use for staffing, whereas the other funds are not allowed to be used for staffing for case management. So the difference is there, and we use the twenty thousand for the case management. Also, we call telephone reassurance calls, where that person will call the two hundred and fifty, fifty seniors on a weekly basis to follow up with them and see if they're okay, follow up with the nutritional meals program, go out with nutritional meals program. So it's a variety of duties, which, again, is not funds that we have available in the other grants. Senior Services, as you know, is really the only program, except for what ARS does with ESL, that's on the CDBG list of programs to be funded. It is one of our highest priority for CDBG and our, our planning for this year, partly because of the increase in demographics of seniors. Over fifteen, sixty percent of our population is seniors. And we began looking at our senior data just recently, and we noticed that about twenty-three percent of the census tract around the ARC is composed of seniors. So that's just one tract. We're beginning to see a, a concentration of seniors, for whatever reason, in that area, which means, again, the increase in meals programs, increase of case management for seniors. And of course, we know the adult assisted living quarters are being shut down. So it has been a very challenging year for our senior care managers in our ARC, it is, it just bulging out of the, you know, the seams there, as well as some of our other programs like ARS, who have a number of seniors, which, of course, many are here. So it is a significant program to cut, not just the fifty seniors, but the other two fifty who get calls from our...
Let's, let's, let's be clear. It basically funds half a staff member.
Correct.
It, it's not going to affect the overall program itself. You're, you're, you're paying basically for staffing at this point, with the twenty thousand dollars.
Correct. Yes.
But without that, that, without that half a staff member, what then happens? Do you not, is that person gone? Do they work half the amount of time?
Yes, that person will be gone.
That person will be gone. So that, okay.
Lose a position.
Because that, that position can't be backfilled from the other grant funding, because it's earmarked in different areas.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay, not as easy a resolution as I...
Question.
Chair.
How many staff members you have working in this program?
We have two FTEs, case managers, right now.
What is, what is FTE?
Uh, two full-time equivalent employees.
Two full-time employees. And so you need two and a half people to work the program?
The two case managers do a lot more direct case management. The other, again, does part-time case management with the, and then also assists with the meals program and the homeward, home, homebound seniors.
So you do, it's not like the program is going to be devoid of staff?
Correct.
You do have two full-time individuals staffing the program. That is, that is approximately, that is being funded five hundred thousand dollars for three years.
That's part of the grant.
From the county. How much more money are we getting for this program?
We are receiving the county grants, and that's, and that's it. And the city general funds pays for the case managers, actually.
And how much do we get from the city's general fund? Hundred and sixty, you said?
Annually, the city leverages a hundred and thirty-six thousand to the senior case management program. So it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand leverage from the city. The two case managers are our general fund positions. And then we get our five hundred thousand dollar, three-year grant from the county.
Approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, right? Plus, you have another hundred and thirty from the general fund annually?
One, one, one thirty-six.
Right. So it's approximately three hundred thousand dollars of funding you're getting for the program already, which includes meals and two staff members.
Correct.
Senior meals and two staff case managers to work with the seniors.
Correct.
Okay.
But less, less seniors will be served is, is cut. Is that correct? I mean, that to me is the bottom line. Are there going to be less seniors contacted, less seniors in contact with the social service worker? That's what's going to happen, correct?
Correct.
All right. The bottom line for me.
And I may ask one more. The, the Youth and Family Services Program for Community Services and Parks, it's ten thousand dollars. How much funding does that program receive and from where?
I believe it receives about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in, in city general funds to fund two case coordinators, I believe, one supervisor coordinator and a part-time position. And the CDBG pays for part of the part-time, well, part of the part-time hourly person.
How much does it get annually? Two hundred and thirty thousand?
Two hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and thirty-eight, I believe.
And you absolutely need ten thousand dollars to make that program work?
That position does provide support for the... That position does provide support for the outreach component of the youth and families.
Not the question I asked.
I'm sorry.
You absolutely need $10,000 to make that program work?
Yes.
You, you need, without the $10,000?
No, the program sure will function without, yes, the question is yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
So, I mean- So where?
Yeah, to me, these are, these are not well-funded programs, but they are programs that are being funded considerably by both general fund monies as well as, uh, grants that are coming from county or different areas. The 20 or, and the $10,000 that are allocated from the C D B G will not, in my opinion, put a dent in the program. However, the $10,000 taken away from the Armenian Relief Society will put a huge dent in the program. And the 10,000, the $20,000 that is being taken away from CASPs will practically eliminate the program. Same thing with the ARC, which is the Adult, Adult Relief Center, which deals with, uh, alcoholic issues, individuals that are alcoholic in the program, uh, people who are, and some of you are very familiar with their programs, people who are dependent on drugs and all of that. It's a referral source for individuals in the community. I think those are, uh, certainly worthwhile proj, uh, worthwhile organizations and projects that can use the help in the community during these difficult times.
Well, those organizations are also funded by county and have other funding sources too, Mr. Manukian. It's not just the, uh, city that has, they, they have multiple funding, uh, sources, so.
Why don't you make a motion, Mr. Manukian? First motion, I don't think, was seconded, and-
Okay, I will, I will move to reallocate the senior services program, $20,000, and the Youth and Family Services Program at $10,000, with $10,000 going to Armenian Relief Society and the remaining split between CASPs and ARC.
10 and 10.
10 and 10.
Yes.
Second.
Well, I'll just say once again that I feel very uncomfortable not really knowing, still not really getting a grasp of what that reduction in funding for those programs really means to the, uh, receivers of services from those programs. I, you know, we still don't have a clear idea of that, and I'd be a lot more comfortable if we could, you know, and this may just be a terrible suggestion, but to perhaps approve this as submitted, but to revisit those city-funded programs, because we could still switch money that comes out of general fund for those, to these, to these organizations, couldn't we? If we wanted to. And we could review those, because we need a thorough, we need a real thorough look at those programs and how they provide their services, because we have a staff member telling us that a $20,000 reduction from their senior programs would strand some of our seniors, and we have a council member saying, basically, he doesn't really believe that, and I don't know which is the truth, and I'm not willing to make that decision right now on faith. Uh, if we could approve this, but revisit the, whatever the general fund, and there is general fund money in that program, correct? And general fund money also in the parks and recre, the other program that we were talking about?
Correct.
Well, we still would have the opportunity, if we could take a closer look at those programs, if we felt that they were, could survive those cuts, or that they were overfunded, or there was a way of making those leaner, of shifting those funds to A R C and the other organizations. Couldn't we do that outside of C D B G?
Certainly you can, but as the council gets to decide all of these funding questions, what you're going to find, right, the short answer to your question is that all these different programs are operating in the margin. You take away $1, it has $1's impact in the amount of services being provided. And so if we take away 10,000, it's going to have that, you're going to have marginally one less person, two less people, three less people being served. And it's a hard, uh, calculus to do, there's no two ways about it. If we go through the, the general fund, uh, budget deliberations in, in a couple of weeks, and for example, uh, we, we increase some other fee, some other place that generates revenues back to the general fund, then just what you're describing can take place. We can add funding back into these types of programs if you so choose. But to the extent that it's all coming to the general fund, then we need to find a way to prop up the general fund in other ways. Because the, the short answer is, we can give you the funding that, or the funding levels for these programs that, that's being discussed, we just have to find a place to pay for it, because there's just a next marginal impact for each cut that you make in all these different programs.
Mr. Mayor, I call the question. We have a motion in a second. If it lives, it lives. If it goes down, it goes down. Do what Ms. Friedman suggested, if it doesn't.
If I, oh-
Well, he called for the question.
Okay. Well, I had, allow me just to make a comment. Uh, we can actually eliminate some of the city programs and look at them later. I just think that it's a, it's a bad policy to start funding nonprofits or, or social organizations in the community through our general. That's, that's all I want to say.
Roll call. Councilmember Friedman?
I'm sorry, how, can you restate the motion so I know exactly what I'm, can somebody restate the motion so I know what I'm voting for?
Yes, uh, I, I had moved to eliminate the $20,000 for a senior services program and the youth family service programs for community services and parks for another 10,000, and splitting it evenly between Armenian Relief Society, CASPs, and ARC.
And is this a vote of the whole of-
Yes.
Counsel.
Counsel.
Just counsel.
Just counsel.
Okay, thank you, okay. Then-
Counselmember Friedman?
Yeah.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
No.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll move 1 A and B again.
That's a major addition.
That's failed, has it not?
The one that's in the report.
It didn't get a second, but it can be moved again.
But die for lack of a second before, so.
Do I have a-
Making it again.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. What's next? And we can take Ms. Friedman's, uh, comments into the budget deliberation.
I would still like to review finding them the funding and reviewing those programs. I just didn't feel that I have enough information to do that at this moment, because we don't know how the, that reduction in funding is going to affect those programs and those seniors. So I wouldn't mind revisiting it.
Yes.
Even if it's for next year's C D B G.
I, I just want to thank everyone for coming. I want to, I want to, I want to say one thing regarding next year's C D B G program, actually. I would prefer not to see city programs that are being funded to the tune of $200,000 to $300,000, take small chunks out of C D B G that should be allocated to local social programs. That's one council member, so.
And just, and, and respecting that, sir.
And I, and Armenian, I said, thank you for coming, we finished our list, and we will continue, just so everyone. I did not say anything derogatory about anybody.
We can do exactly that, if that's the council's pleasure, if we are willing to either cut those city programs to the equivalent amount or fund them somehow through the general fund, through either other cuts or revenue offset.
That's a policy we set at the beginning.
That's a policy council says.
Yeah, well, we had that discussion and chose to fund some of the city programs.
Yes, sir.
We started that a few years ago.
That they do. All right, what's next?
Mayor and, uh, members of the housing authority and city council members, next is Director of Community Development regarding Doran Gardens Affordable Housing Project Preparation for Sale of Units at 2 A's Council Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Glendale and the Housing Authority for the Purpose of Administration of the Begin Program Related to the Project and Designating Individuals Authorized to Sign and Approve Begin Documents.
Is it possible to have a-
Let's hold on a minute, yeah, we'll just take a two or three-minute recess. I'm sorry, what's up here?
Good to see you here with the crowd.
B is Authority Resolution Authorizing Cooperation Agreement Between the Housing Authority, City of Glendale for a Purpose of Administration of the Begin Program Related to the Project and Designating Individuals Authorized to Sign and Approve Begin Documents. C is Authority Resolution Approving and Implementation Agreement By and Between the Housing Authority and the H P D F O L C Regarding Sale of Affordable Housing Units to Moderate-Income First-Time Homebuyers and Making Certain Findings Related thereto. And D is Authority Resolution Appropriating $5,266,475 for Begin Loans Funding.
Ms. Rocha.
Yes, sir. Uh, before you is, thankfully, the, the culmination of a very attractive quality, uh, 60-unit affordable housing development that has been, uh, partnered on by the Glendale Housing Authority and Heritage Housing Partners. At this point, we are coming to grips with the impact of, uh, the economy on the delivery of this project, and we have a couple of wrinkles within the overall project deal that we'd like to get council direction on, and then also seek your permission to enter into a specific, uh, housing implementation agreement. So with that, our administrator, Peter Zovak, will give you the staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of the council and the authority, staff is prepared to, uh, present on this item, uh, today before you with regards to Doran Gardens, a 60-unit homeownership project in which 57 units will be reserved for purchase by moderate-income first-time homebuyers. Um, recognizing the heavy agenda that you had today and in consideration of your time, we could, if it's, uh, the desire of this council and the authority, move this item to next week.
I move this item to next week.
Second.
How long is your report?
It could be as quick as you'd like it. There is no new economic impact to the funding that's already been committed, it's strictly restructuring what, uh, has already been provided.
Make a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
We've all been, I'll move 2 A, 2 A for the council.
Yeah, this will have to be a substitute motion, because there's a motion to move it to next week.
Oh.
Was there a second?
Is there a second to the substitute?
There was a second. Well, there hasn't been a second to a substitute motion.
I thought the substitute motion takes precedence over the original motion. Second. The substitute motion.
Roll call.
Which is?
For the substitute motion to approve the, the items.
What I made.
Correct.
Substitute, okay.
Okay. Councilmember Friedman?
Well, hey, wait a minute.
A little comment, because I'd like to hear-
This is a serious issue with millions of dollars at stake.
Right.
I had a short briefing with staff this morning. It's been a day that started, for me, at 9:00 AM, and I want to make sure that when I vote on this, I know everything and I have all my questions answered, and that I've actually properly formulated the questions. So I am, although there's a motion on the floor, I would, uh, request that that motion be denied and permit this council member, this housing authority member, this chair of the housing authority, the decency to, uh, have a proper time to prepare and to address the issues with staff.
I didn't know a motion could be denied. I made a motion, there's a second.
Well, why don't you withdraw? Why don't you just withdraw your motion?
Would you like to withdraw your motions?
No.
Or is that, no, all right.
My, my day started at 6 o'clock, mister.
But wait a minute, if, if we reject that motion, then we basically-
And the, the motion to continue is still on the floor.
Oh, is it, so it's not that we've denied?
Right.
I've never heard of denying a motion.
All right, let's have a roll call on the substitute motion.
This is a substitute motion, which is actually the original motion.
And I just realized that it's the council's motion, and there's, there's authority action required as well, so.
I can, I can just see the cartoon on this.
Yeah, coming on Saturday.
Well, when you start at 10:00 AM and you're still sitting in the same place at 5:00 PM.
I move.
Madam Council, and remember-
I work from 6:00 in the morning to midnight.
Yeah. There's been a motion proposed, and it is a motion for the actions stated before the council and authority. Um, there was a motion and a second.
Which was?
It is what is stated on the agenda. The council resolution authorizing the cooperation agreement.
It can only be for council.
All right, so those who want to continue the hearing to next, uh-
This is not for the continuation.
No, I know, I'm just saying they should vote.
No, vote now.
All right.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Friedman?
No.
Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
No.
Okay.
Now, considering, we all got briefed on this, it's not like we're-
You're taking care of that, okay, so.
Well, why don't you give the presentation, Mr. Weaver? Explain to me how that 5.1 million is going.
Look, I'm not going to do that, come on, Mr. Najarian.
Well, why would you deny me the opportunity to ask the questions?
Come on, you had a briefing this morning, you had time to ask him all the questions you wanted.
I'll be the one that decides how many questions I've asked and how many have been asked.
You're just grandstanding, my God.
You're the grandstander.
But let's, uh-
Mr. Weaver.
Let's get back to the business at hand, and so, are we in agreement?
Mr. City Attorney, will this motion carry over, or the actions carry over automatically to next week, or does there need to be another motion?
Well, I did, I did have a motion, and there was a second to carry it over to next week.